Okay, great. I think we can get started. Hi, everyone. Welcome to the last session, last technical session of formats, which is on verification of nonlinear systems. My name is Sadiq Sojani and I will chair this session. We have two presentations to record, two video recording of papers. There's an opportunity for asking questions after each video recordings and then we go to gather time for more questions after both presentations. So the first presentation is, the first video recording is by Edward Kim on automatic dynamic parallel top bundles for reachability analysis of nonlinear systems. So we can listen to the video recording if possible. Just also emphasize one thing, there is a chance that we automatically log off from this session. If this happens, just click on the Zoom link again and join. The session should, should go on by rejoining.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to my presentation this year at formats on automatic dynamic parallel top bundles for the reachability of nonlinear systems. I'm Edward Kim at UNC Chapel Hill. This is joint work with Stanley Beck at Stony Brook University and my advisor, Peresera Shteter Deguerra at UNC Chapel Hill as well. To give a quick overview of our presentation today, we'll give an outline of the background, our contributions, the presentation of the algorithm that we implemented, results on the benchmarks and some concluding remarks at the very end. And so to begin, as many of you have surmised, this is about the reachability over nonlinear systems. And one of the many techniques in computing over approximation of reachable sets for nonlinear systems is to use template polyhedra. And the study of these template polyhedra found motivations in the static analysis of programs, but and we are particularly interested in our case in parallelograms as a template polyhedra. And so to give some definitions found in literature, a template polyhedron is usually described as a tuple, which is of a tuple of a matrix and a real value vector. And the rows of the matrix H describe directions in space. And so these directions in turn describe hyperplanes. And along with the offsets found in our real valued vector, they describe a conjunction of linear inequalities. And this conjunction describes in turn another convex polytope in space. So for our case, we're mostly concerned with parallelograms. And the only difference here is that each template direction also has a lower bound. So we have two real valued vectors C L and C U in such a way that it's upper and lower bounded by each component of these bound vectors in a sense. So what this is essentially akin to is you have a template direction and a corresponding hyperplane. And so you consider the negative half space of that hyperplane. And also you consider the negative of that template direction and consider the positive half space of the negative hyperplane. And so if you have any of these corresponding to each dimension, you get a parallelogram. And as many of you could probably see, this is just a higher dimensional analog of a parallelogram on the plane. So we are considered in sets of these parallelograms and the intersection of the parallelograms, which is, which we deem as a parallelogram bundle. And so this bundle will also have a corresponding template matrix. And this is just a conjunction of all the unique template directions found in each of the parallelograms. Now, many of these parallelograms will share template directions, but we consider the unique template directions for each of these parallelograms, right? And if you combine them together, we get a parallelogram bundle. And the takeaway of this is that any convex initial set can be expressed as a parallelogram bundle. And there's a beautiful diagram by a nice paper by Drayose et al. called Parallel to Bundle for Polynomial Reachability. And this paper captures the foundation for our work. And there you can see how a triangle on the plane can be decomposed into intersection of parallelograms. And so in this case, you have parallelogram P one, which shares the sides H two and H three. And so this, this is by the dotted parallelogram here. And then you have a parallelogram two, which shares sides H point and H two. And subscribed by this dash parallelogram here. And as you can see, the intersection of these two parallelograms gives you this triangle Q. And one thing to note is that this representation isn't necessarily unique. So you can imagine that you could find other parallelograms whose intersections also give you Q as well. So the crux of reachability using this method is this nonlinear optimization. And so we want to be able to bound the image of parallelograms under this nonlinear function F. And what this essentially amounts to is using the template directions of our template matrix for Q, we perform a nonlinear optimization such that we find new lower and upper offsets, which captures the image using this, using these template directions in Q. And so how do we do this? This can be formulated as a nonlinear optimization problem here where the upper offsets for each template direction in Q is performed by doing this nonlinear optimization here. And similarly for the lower offsets, you consider the minimum of the same nonlinear optimization term. And the reachable set computation done by this iterating this optimization each time to over approximate the images of the bundles at each step of the computation. And so here's a background, the general algorithm, how to do this. And so we wanted to be able to take an initial parallelogram Q, bundle Q, and propagate it for S steps and find an over approximation of this reachable set. And so the way that we do it is we first start off with the initial bundle and we transform this, we just iterate this transform bundle procedure for S steps. And then we output the over approximation that we get out of it, which is exactly just the bundles that we calculate from transform bundle. And this transfer bundle simply amounts to iterating that nonlinear optimization over each parallelogram in P. So for each parallelogram in P, we have a corresponding template direction T I, which comes, which is associated to this parallelogram P. And we perform the nonlinear optimization for each template direction. And we find the tightest upper bound for each of the template directions, which we've, which is described by this min operation here. And the tightest lower bound for each template direction, which is described by this max direction here. And so we do this over each parallelogram and each template direction for this, each parallelogram. And then so we get a new set of, sorry, lower and upper bounds for that. And then we can construct new parallelograms from the same template matrix and the new upper and lower bounds. And so that means we get a new bundle, which bounds the image of the previous bundle. And we return this bundle here. And so we do this for an S number of steps and that becomes our reachable set over approximation. Now, in general, so for previous literature, they considered nonlinear polynomial dynamics, which means that the function, so the actual dynamics is given by a polynomial, which means that if you, this dot product here or this optimization procedure will actually be a polynomial optimization procedure. However, this is generally a costly operation. And so the insight actually came from leveraging Bernstein polynomials. So the idea is that Bernstein polynomials are complete as a basis for polynomials defined over the unit box. And so by transforming these, any polynomial over the, defined over the unit box into this Bernstein basis, the largest coefficient found in this, in this Bernstein basis, upper bounds the supremum of the polynomial over the unit box. Similarly, for the lower bound, the smallest coefficient of the, found in the Bernstein basis, lower bounds the infimum of the polynomial over this unit box. And so this might not give precise solutions to the polynomial optimization procedure, but it certainly gives lower and upper bounds you can use. So one caveat with this is that you need to do an extra linear transformations, taking the unit box to the parallelogram. And so that's a simple linear transformation, which is required to use diverse type polynomials. And so the drawbacks of this are that so far only static parallelograms have been considered. And so what do we mean by this? It means that the template directions and the parallelograms that we define using these template directions are given as user input at the beginning of the reachable set computation. And they actually don't change during the set of the computation, which means that we use the same template matrix at each step. And furthermore, these template directions are generally the axis aligned in the diagonal directions. But it's not exactly clear that these directions necessarily yield good over approximations for every type of model, right? And similarly, the template directions are said at the beginning as mentioned, so they can't adapt to the behavior, the dynamics later on in the computation, which means that factors such as wrapping error could yield over approximations, which are too conservative for any practical use. And so our contributions are, we present a method which is both dynamic and automatic. And so what we mean by dynamic is the template that we generate at each step depend on the state the bundle is in at that point. And the data that we sample at that, at that step. And they're automatic in the sense that the user has to do very little to actually generate these template directions. And our methods use two procedures. One is PCA, Principal Component Analysis. And the other one uses local linear approximations. Secondly, we extend our tool call, which was actually created to experiment with these bundle, reachability set techniques, to leverage NASA's Kodiak to perform nonlinear optimization rather than Bernstein polynomials. And Kodiak allows us to parallelize our implementation to scale with an increasing number of parallelograms in our bundles. So on to the contributions. So we choose template directions at each step by two, two procedures working in tandem. And so these two procedures are, one procedure generates new template directions via PCA and the other generates template directions through local linear approximations. And secondly, so each procedure adds one parallelogram to the bundle at each step. And they also set a template lifespan. And so what this lifespan essentially is, is a timer. And it tells you how many steps in the future this, these template directions and parallelograms will, and the corresponding parallelograms will exist in the bundle in, in the future. So and so to elaborate on what these procedures do, the PCA directions are first generated by taking a bundle and calculating support points over all the template directions found in the bundles, template matrix over the bundle. And so a support points are essentially just maximizing the, the template directions over the bundle itself. And so in particular, since there N of these template directions will get two N support points. And then we propagate the support points to the next step by giving dynamics F, and this will give us a set of two N trajectories. Now, using these trajectories, we perform PCA on the endpoint of these trajectories. And that yields a real value N by N matrix whose rows are PCA directions. Now, certain implementations might give the columns as the PCA directions, but that's just a simple transpose to get the, to get the rows to be the PCA directions. And so with these N PCA directions, we can find another single parallelogram P prime. So then we add this parallelogram P prime in this template directions into the bundle to get, to get Q prime. And we have a corresponding template lifespan that we assign to these directions. And so these, this template lifespan parameter is generally set as a tunable parameter on our end. And we'll see how this will affect the quality of the reachable set in our, on our benchmarks. And so similarly for linear approximations, this come, our choice for calculating these template directions come from the observation that if the dynamics were linear, as if the dynamics were given by a linear transformation. And the image of a parallelogram described as such will just simply be a template directions or a template matrix multiplied by the inverse on the right. And so to give an example, since the initial parallelogram will be defined by axis aligned directions, which is just the cardinal directions in the system, the image after the first step will be given by A inverse. As so the rows of A inverse give us the, the transformed template directions for after one step. And similarly, after two steps, this would just be the composition of A inverse. We use those rows as our template directions. And these will be the exact image of the initial parallelogram. And so with this in mind, we begin the computation by first initializing an accumulation of matrix, which describes the linear template directions at a, at a certain step to first be the initial pair, the initial directions. And to generate the linear approximation templates, we once again calculate the support points of all the template directions over the bundle Q. And similarly, we propagate the support points given the different dynamics to the next step. And this gives us a set of trajectories once again. And we calculate the best fit linear approximation matrix A using the start and end points of the trajectories. And so what this means is that we try to find the, in, in a, in a perfectly linear dynamics, this will give us exactly the matrix A described two slides ago here. And so once again, we, as per the observations, we multiply the template directions by A inverse to yield this new template directions, A, T len times A inverse. And this gives us a, a new parallelogram, which uses these template directions. And we assign another template lifespan P prime and add it to the bundle. This gives us a new bundle Q prime, P prime with P prime, yes. And so then we update this accumulation matrix to be the, our new template directions. And so what this template lifespan parameter describes is the number of steps after the creation of the parallelogram directions in which these directions can exist in the bundle. And the intuition is that certain dynamics will be more amenable to directions generated previously in the reachable set computation. And this is basically a compromise of the algorithm, of, of the algorithm being adaptive and also attenuating the computational cost of optimizing over a large number of parallelograms. So there's a naive scheme where you could just keep adding directions without taking any of them out. But the issue with this is of course efficiency of optimizing over a large number of directions, especially towards the late stages of the reachable set computation. And we allow this to actually be a tunable parameter that we vary in our experiments, as we will see in a later slide. And so to get a pictorial understanding of what's actually happening, if you imagine on the plane, parallelogram P one in such a way as template directions give these lines here. And if this parallelogram is the only parallelogram which consists inside this bundle Q one, and if you pass it into F, we would get a corresponding image, which is F of Q one. And of course, we will reoptimize our template directions in such a way that the new parallelogram P two envelops the image. And then we would add a new parallelogram R two with these template directions in such a way that it also envelops the image as well. And so our new region would be this region here, which is the intersection of the two parallelograms. And once again, we can pass it into F, which will give us a new region in space, this image. And then we can reoptimize the template directions of R two to give a new parallelogram R three, which envelops the image. And then we add another parallelogram, let's say S three, which envelops this image here. And so the takeaway here is that if P here, if their template directions had a lifespan of two, then in two steps, we no longer see the corresponding template directions have a part in, in the reachable set computation. And so identically, if R two had a lifespan of two, then in the next step, we would no longer see these template directions having an effect on the reachable set. So here is an outline of the entire dynamic algorithm. And so once again, we have an initial parallelogram and the initial bundle. And we have the initial template directions, as mentioned, for the linear approximation, which is just set to the identity. And just to reiterate what, over the past few slides, we get the support points over the bundle. We propagate these points one step, excuse me, according to the dynamics. We compute the approximate linear transformation according to the, the sample support points and the propagated points. We find the new linear approximation template directions by multiplying it. The inverse on the right, right? And we find new linear template directions. And then we find the corresponding PCA directions. And then we find that we take the conjunction of them and we have a new template matrix. And now for like, in this case, we have a lifespan counter. If we set the lifespan counter to be something other than zero, we consider the the template matrices, which are L steps in, in the past, right? And so we consider the conjunction of all of them and then we feed them into the transform bundle. And it gives, this gives us an over approximation. And we output these over approx, all these over approximations at the end. So one caveat here is that we assume that the lifespan parameter for both linear and PCA directions are the same, but this isn't necessarily true. In fact, for our benchmarks, the lifespan parameter for the PCA parallel, for the parallelograms defined by PCA directions and the parallelograms defined by the linear approximation directions are actually different. And we vary them independently. And so we, a little overview of our tool call. So call is actually a tool that we wrote, we wrote in Python to we actually rewrote a tool called Sapo. And Sapo was originally created with static parallelograms in mind and where it was using Bernstein's expansion as its optimization procedure. But to kind of experiment with a wider variety of optimization procedures and kind, and do more interesting things, we figured that it was more fruitful and easier to write code in Python. And so we use NumPy for the matrix computation, SYMPY for the symbolic substitutions, SciPy and Matplotlib for reach for the, plotting the reachable sets and computing the volume for lower dimensional systems. And the optimization procedure, which we use to find the upper and lower bounds for the template directions to perform through Kodiak, which was written by NASA. And Kodiak actually allows for easy parallelization of the offset calculation, which is just done through the multi processing module packaged in Python. And the good thing about Kodiak is it allows for more general dynamics beyond polynomial ones considered in Sapo. So in the extended version, as we will mention, we actually consider dynamics such as the inverted pendulum, which has trigonometric functions built into it. And so for benchmarks, we select six nonlinear models with polynomial dynamics. And so the reason why we restrict ourselves to polynomial dynamics here for the paper is because mostly we wanted to benchmark against Sapo. And we wanted to compare our performance with Sapo's static parallelogram bundles and directly compare it with the dynamic strategies that we present in our algorithm. And so Sapo's static parallelograms in particular are defined by axis aligned and diagonal directions. And so to provide meaningful comparisons, we set the number of dynamic parallelograms to be equal to the number of static parallel, static ones defined in Sapo, excluding the initial box. And so this will be clear in the next slide, or the next two slides, I suppose. And so here's an overview of the benchmarks that we use. And so many of these are well used in reachability benchmarking, except for perhaps this COVID one, which I will describe in the next slide. And so the COVID supermodel is basically, it's basically a modified SIR model where you have an extra independent group representing the asymptomatic patients. So you have susceptible to asymptomatics, susceptible to symptomatic and asymptomatic. And so the idea is that asymptomatic patients can't be, are not detected. And so they have their own dynamics, which which describe it, right? And this supermodel was actually proposed by the Indian COVID supermodel committee. And it was created to model the COVID outbreak in India. However, subsequent work generalized this to other countries as well, such as Australia, South Korea, the United States. And the relevant citations are actually all in our papers. So I encourage you to check it out if you are interested. And also here's just a, a plot of, so the, the blue region here is the predicted region based off the COVID supermodel. And we actually plot this against a real time Indian COVID data. And this is a blog post on ACM sickbed. And I have a link at the very end where Stan Beck and Professor Deguerra, we all contributed to this. And so on to the results. So for the models previously defined in Sapo, we set the stack parallel to be exactly those found in Sapo. And to simplify this, if you take a look at the Vanderpoel subtable here, the subtables are generally divided by strategy and total volume. And so what strategy is, is at the very bottom, you see that there are five static diagonal Sapo templates. And so this refers to the non-trivial static parallelograms which use diagonal directions. So the ones excluding the initial box. And this static strategy yields this total volume. And the way that we calculate this volume is for low dimensional systems, we just compute the convex hull. And we find the volume of the convex hull. For higher dimensional systems where convex hull may not be as efficient, we calculate the dimensions of the tightest enveloped box, which of the, of the bundle. And we calculate the volume of that. And so the total volume would be the sum of all the volume estimates for every single bundle in the flow pipe. And for the strategy here, this number refers to the lifespan parameter for, for in this case would be the linear approximation parallelogram. So we add to the parallel, to the bundle. And so in this case, we're using exclusively linear approximation parallelograms. And we have the total volume here. And similarly for PCA, for one PCA means that we're recycling PCA parallel to for each step. So and we have the total volume here. And so the bold here refers to the best performing dynamic strategy that we have. And so what we see is that the best performance dynamic strategy that we have is is generally an order of magnitude better than the statics strategies given by Sapo. And this is, this is generally true for all the benchmarks that we tested. And one thing to note is that because to address the unavailability of a four dimensional model in Sapo, we actually sample random subsets of five static parallelograms defined with the diagonal directions. And we choose the flow pipe with the smallest volume. And we take those directions of parallelograms and then we benchmark it against that. And so another section of our results is our performance under increasing initial sets. In this case, what we do is we vary the initial boxes' dimensions to gradually increase the box's volume. And then we plot the total flow pipe volumes after running the benchmark on static strategies and the best performing dynamic strategies. And so what this actually looks like is if you turn your attention to the Vanderpoel model here, is the horizontal axis here describes the volume of the initial box, whereas the vertical axis here describes the total volume of the reachable set after we compute it using those initial box dimensions. And so we have two lines here. And so the blue line here describes the trend exhibited by Sapo's static algorithm. Whereas the orange line here describes the trend exhibited by our dynamic algorithm. And the parameter set for our dynamic algorithm in this case is a R, sorry, the parallel, PCA parallelogram is set with template lifespan three. And the linear approximation parallelograms are set with lifespan two. So the, one of the main observations to take away is that our dynamic strategies perform better than the static ones in controlling the flow pipe volume as the initial set becomes larger. So this is readily apparent here in the Vanderpoel and the SIR model. But there's some extreme cases of But uh there's some extreme cases of in the jet engine and neural model where the flow pipes are at least in order magnitude larger. Uh but another observation is that the performance of the static paralleletopes tends to degrade rapidly as we increase the volume of the initial box. And this is in accordance with the intuition that the static directions don't uh do a very good job of of adapting to the dynamics as the computation progresses. And uh the a similar line of um experiments is a performance against a random static paralleletopes. And in this case, what we do is we do the same um uh scheme of increasing the initial sets. Um but the static uh paralleletope bundles that we um benchmark against are random. So what does this mean? Uh so we what we do is we sample N directions and N dimensions for N dimensions uh uniformly on the surface of the unit N minus one sphere. And that actually defines one paralleletope. And we sample twenty of these paralleletope for each trial. And then we average the total flow pipe volumes, and then we plot this against the best performing dynamic strategy. And so if we go to uh the figure on the right, once again, for the Vanderpoel model, the green line here describes the trend after uh re- uh repeating the scheme for ten trials and averaging them. And so this is the average uh total flow pipe uh volume for uh that initial box. So and similarly for the blue line here, this is the uh line for our dynamic algorithm. And in this case, we set our um parameters to be uh the PCA paralleletopes having a lifespan of eight and our linear approximation paralleletopes to have a lifespan of twelve. And we see that we uh we see similar trends um for these for the random uh schemes. As for the uh the deterministic schemes here with uh Sapo's directions. And the reason why we did this experiment is to uh ensure that uh um that the trends that we see here aren't due to the fact that uh axis aligned directions or their diagonal directions are like par- particularly ill-suited for these specific benchmarks. So we see a similar trend, and not only uh there is some erratic behavior. And we s- this we predict that this this is um, sorry, the reason for this is uh since we are sampling from uh random directions, there is some inherent numerical instability involved during the computation. And so that's why we see these uh so these erratic trends here. And so the final uh result that I wish to impart is that there's no universal ratio between the number of PCA paralleletopes and the number of linear approximation paralleletopes, which work well on all benchmarks. And to see an example of this, on the left column here, um are flow pipes for the Vanderpoel model. And the right are flow pipes for the neural model. And what we see for the Vanderpoel model is um using exclusively linear approximation paralleletopes uh results in a much leaner reachable set than using exclusively PCA paralleletopes. Uh the opposite trend is shown here for the neural model where using more linear approximation paralleletopes uh gives a a more conservative uh reachable set than using more PCA uh paralleletopes. And but uh as you see here, using uh dynamic uh strategies still gives us a leaner reachable sets than using static uh paralleletopes as seen here in the very last row for the Sapo flow pipes. And so future directions are if there are any other adaptive methods that we can use to generate these template directions dynamically. And so others besides PCA or linear approximation. And if there are any sophisticated linear approximation methods through uh Kuhnman linearization techniques. And uh in the vein of uh HPC hardware, we want to investigate if we can use GPUs to optimize over hundreds if not thousands of uh uh directions and see if that has any noticeable effect on the quality of the reachable set. And uh the fourth one has to do with structural uh questions about why PCA directions perform better than linear approximation directions on certain systems. So in the case of Vanderpoel, uh why do we have such a um better amenability with linear than PCA? And as a quick wrap-up, for those who are interested in CA, um it is open source and you can find it here in its repository. Uh if you have any suggestions, if you want to run the code yourself, uh please look the link here or email me. Uh for those who want to use Kodiak in their own work, you can find it in NASA's organizational repo here. And for those who are interested in the blog post, um the Sickbay article is here. Uh thanks, everyone, and I'm free to take any questions.
Uh huh. Great. Thanks, Edward, for the nice video recording. Uh are there any questions from the audience? If you have any questions, you can either type it in the Q and A uh box or just raise your hand. Uh there's a question, uh I just uh read it uh for you, Edward, to answer. Uh the question is, most of your examples, including COVID, are differential equations that you discretize. Have you tried instead of discretization to compute the evolution uh of the parallele- paralleletope based on the ODE using maximum principle? Uh could be easier and more precise.
Um, right, so um to that point, so uh this work um it's very much focused on um discrete nonlinear systems. And what I mean by that? And so I mentioned in a pre- um towards the very uh early slides um that there's a paper by Dreosi and all um called Parallel Toop Bundles for Polynomial Reachability. And so very much our view of this problem came from discrete nonlinear system. Now that being said, um that is a uh is a good point and um. So with continuous, um so with continuous systems, I'm wondering about how the nonlinear uh optimization would work. Um next to so that portion, I suppose, that which is the crux of the reachability algorithm. I'm not sure how that portion would work, but that that's a very good question. I think um um it's worth looking into, yeah. But um this it's just it's just a matter of our background and our view. Um if that maybe that's not a very satisfying answer, but yeah.
But can you just use the continuity of the solution uh to also cap- share the error coming from time discretization? So Edward, did you hear my question?
No, I didn't. Yeah, sorry. Um.
It's along the same uh uh along the line of the same question. Uh so you do time discretization. I said, uh can you use the continuity of the solution to capture the error coming from time discretization? Uh it's more like computing the solution based on the time discretization and then enlarge the reach set uh using some bounds on the Lipschitz constant of the solution.
Yeah, so I'm not uh I have to think, I would if I think about, I'm not sure how to hold exactly uh answered this question, but um.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, yeah, um I'll have to think about it. And um, yeah, uh so uh Doug, other queries for this, um so um Standback and um Professor Degarala, um they may have a better insight into this than I am. Um I, of course, I don't want to give any um incorrect solutions. I don't want to do anything, so I'm a bit reluctant to answer it, but um but if uh if you're interested, uh they have their emails and I can always pass along the question. Yeah, that's that's a good point. Um.
That's fine. We can take it offline. So uh for the sake of time, I think we can go to the next presentation. And then more questions we can ask in the Gather Town after both the presentations. Uh okay, so the next presentation is by Sarah Mohammed Inajad. Uh and the title of the presentation is Deep RNN, Differential Verification of Recurrent Neural Networks. So we're here to the video recording.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah, and today I'm going to present Deep RNN, which is a work for differential verification of recurrent neural networks. This work has been done in collaboration with Brandon Paulson, Jutarmoy Deshmukh, and Chow Wang, all from the University of Southern California. What is the motivation behind our work? Recurrent neural networks have become very popular in a variety of applications such as text classification, speech recognition, and as controllers in autonomous systems. But in practical setting, we usually need to deploy RNNs on resource-constrained platforms such as smartphones or embedded devices. But these devices usually have memory restrictions, and that raises the need for compression techniques. Popular compression techniques include weight quantization, for example, and quantizing the weights of neural networks from thirty-two bit to sixteen bits. Or um edge pruning, which is removing an edge of neural networks and neuron removal, which is removing a neuron. However, the problem with these compression techniques is that they do not guarantee the equivalence of the compressed and original network. And we propose Deep RNN, which is the first differential verification tool for recurrent neural networks that guarantees the equivalence of two structurally similar recurrent neural networks. The agenda for today's talk is as follows. First, I'm going to provide um some background into recurrent neural networks and interval-bound propagation, uh which are pretty requisite to our approach. And then I will uh explain some related works. Uh I will elaborate on our approach and provide some results. Finally, I will provide conclusions. Recurrent neural networks are special types of neural networks that are good at handling sequential data. And the reason is that they have a looping mechanism that allows the information to flow from one step to the next step. If you uh want to learn more about recurrent neural networks, you can refer to this tutorial. This is an example of uh vanilla RNN, and uh it is an unrolled version of the RNN. H denotes the hidden state of RNN, which uh kind of denotes the output from uh that carries information from the previous input. And X demonstrates the data at a time T. And W H H is uh the weight that is multiplied by hidden state. And W H is is the weight that is multiplied by the current input. And we compute H based on these um uh the previous hidden state and the current input using a fine transformation and then a nonlinear activation function. And the final output is again computed using a fine transformation on current hidden state. And the problem with vanilla RNNs is that they suffer from short-term memory. That is because of vanishing gradient problem. And to mitigate this issue, two special kinds of recurrent neural networks are created. Long-short-term memory networks, or LSTMs, and gated recurrent units, or GRUs. LSTMs and GRUs are capable of learning long- long-term dependencies due to their special structures called gates. If you are interested to learn more about LSTMs and GRUs, you can refer to this tutorial. Uh these um are the structures of LSTMs and GRUs, which consist of several gates. I skip uh the explanation about the structure of LSTM and GRU for uh brevity, but you can refer to this tutorial to learn more about them. And uh interval-bound propagation is to propagate an interval through the neural network. Given the input interval, we are interested to know what is the uh all possible values of outputs or output interval. This will involve linear and nonlinear operations on input interval. Linear operations include addition, subtraction, and multiplication by a constant for addition. We just add the lower bounds together and upper bounds together for subtraction. To compute the lower bound, we subtract the upper bound of the second interval from the lower bound of the first interval and vice versa. And uh for multiplication and depend on and depending on C being positive and negative is computed uh as AC, BC, or BCA, C. And regarding the nonlinear operation, nonlinear operations in neural networks are activation functions. And since most of the activation functions, such as sigmoid and tanh, are monotonically increasing given an interval, A and B, and applying activation function on P is i- is equal to sigma of A and sigma of B, since it's monotonically increasing. And a technique to improve accuracy of IBP is using symbolic inputs. For example, P and Q are symbolic intervals based on X. P is equal to five X and Q is equal to four X, where the where X is equal to minus one and bar. So concrete propagation is to first, uh when we want to compute P minus Q, concrete propagation is to compute P and then compute Q and then subtract them from each other, which will be equal to minus nine and nine, which is kind of loose. But if we just consider symbolic values and subtract symbolic values from each other and then replace X, we will get a much tighter interval. That's why this symbolic propagation will improve uh the accuracy of IBP. And in our work, we use this symbolic propagation as well. There are some existing related works, such as Crown, which is a tool for verification of a single feed-forward neural network with general activation functions. By single, I mean it just verifies that the output of a neural network is within some range rather than considering the relationship between two networks, the compressed and original network. Popcorn is also for a single recurrent neural network. But ReLU-deep and Neurodeep, uh to the best of our knowledge, are the first differential verification tools that can handle verification, differential verification of feed-forward neural networks with ReLU activation function. Our work is an extension of ReLU-deep and Neurodeep to feed-forward neural networks with general activation function and also recurrent neural networks. Here is the problem definition. Given two recurrent neural networks, F and F prime, which F is the original network and F prime is the compressed network, and also the interval or range of each input X, we are interested to know um whether the difference between outputs will stay um in a specific range of epsilon or not. That's something we want to prove. I will explain our approach on a toy example. Here is the network F, uh which is an unrolled vanilla RNN network. And we obtain F prime for the compressed version by rounding the weights of this network. And now, uh our the way um we are interested in computing the differences between the outputs of these two networks. The naive way would be to first compute the output of the original network, output range of the original network, given this input rate, and also the compressed network, and subtract them from each other, which will result in a loose interval. I will show that later. But our approach works in this way, that we assume as some and difference intervals of zero and zero as input, and we propagate those intervals, those difference intervals through the network and compute the final difference interval. Uh which will involve linear and nonlinear operations on difference intervals. We focus on one particular node to see how we compute the difference intervals. So here are the input differences that has been computed from the previous neurons. Delta shows the difference interval, and H is the output of the incoming neuron. And here, um you see the change in weights. So we So we are, we we want to compute the effect of these um weight changes. For example, this one, that weight changes from two point one to two. The way that uh we compute uh this effect is multiplying and the compressed weight times delta plus the difference between weights time H. And the reason for this formula is that we proved that in the paper that it's computed in this way, you can refer uh to the paper to know more about this. And here is the effect of this um weight change. You also compute the effect of this weight change the same way, but for this one is much similar. It's just the change in the weight times the input interval. So we add up these three intervals and we will get delta A, which is the difference before applying activation function. We represent the output of a neuron before applying activation function with A. That's why delta A is the difference before applying activation function. And we represent the output of each neuron after applying activation function with H. And delta H will be the difference after applying activation function. Now we are interested in computing delta H, how we compute delta H. Delta H is in fact H prime minus H, which is output of the neuron in the um compressed network minus output in the original network. And H is in fact sigma of A prime. Uh and um H prime is sigma of A prime and H is sigma of A. We replace that with these values. And now we replace A prime with A plus delta A. Now this will be a two variable uh function and we encode it as an optimization problem. So to compute the lower and upper bound of delta H, um we need to solve to optimization problem. For example, to compute the lower one, we are interested in minimizing uh this function given the intervals for A and delta A. And also to get the upper bound, we do solve a maximization problem. And we use a set of heuristics to solve these optimization problems. For example, for this function sigma X, and the function was of form sigma X plus C minus sigma X. Is always um and since this uh sigma is a monotonically increasing function and the only appears in this uh sigma, this all all the function is monotonically increasing in G. And and therefore, the maximum always happens in the upper bound of G and the minimum happens in the lower bound of G. In that way, we just convert it into a one variable optimization problem. To know more details about the next step, please refer to our paper. But using those approaches, we compute the delta H as minus zero point eighteen and zero point twenty two. In this way, we compute delta for all neurons and propagate it through the network. And finally, we compute the final difference. And here is the um difference computed using the naive approach. As we see, our approach is uh results in uh three times tighter interval, which is one of the main contribution of our approach. And we use two benchmarks to evaluate our approach. MNIST benchmark, which is for image classification. And it consists of hand or ten digits, digits from zero to nine and each image is a twenty eight by twenty pixels image. And the reason for choosing this benchmark is that it has been used by previous work popcorn and that's why we chose it to make a comparison. And another benchmark is human activity recognition, which is to recognize human activities based on inputs from a smartphone's sensors. And this is our second benchmark. And the neural networks that we choose are twelve feed forward neural networks, twelve vanilla recurrent neural networks and six L S T Ms. And for activation functions, we focus on sigmoid and tanh. And the way that uh we create verification problems or properties is as follows. We round the edge weights of the networks from thirty two bit to sixteen bit. And for those uh weights that are very close to zero, we just uh set them as zero. That's the way that we get the compressed network. Now to get the input regions, we randomly choose one hundred test inputs and we generate the input intervals using two effort, global perturbation or targeted pixel perturbation. Global perturbation is to perturb uh each of the inputs to minus and plus one percent of the whole range. But targeted pixel perturbation is to set and the range for three inputs to the whole range. And finally, the goal is to verify that the output does not change more than ten percent of its range. And our results show that Deep R N N can verify eighty nine percent of all the verification problems and it returns unknown for the other eleven percent verification problem. However, Crown and popcorn can only verify thirty seven percent of the problems. And also Deep R N N is forty percent faster than Crown and popcorn. Here are um concrete results for some benchmarks. When um for harder dataset and Vanilla R N N with tanh activation function and for epsilon equal to two, which is a ten percent of output range. And this global shows that input uh is uh input range is obtained using global perturbation and through input is that shows that input has been obtained using targeted pixel perturbation as I explained in the previous slide. And this shows the structure of the R N N, three sequences of thirty two neurons, three sequences of one hundred and twenty eight neurons, et cetera. As we see, if R N N uh from from one hundred properties in each case, Deep R N N um usually verifies all the properties except the last case. Uh and it can verify much more properties compared to popcorn. And here it shows the average value of the delta, which is the final difference. As we see, Deep R N N and computes a much more smaller delta compared to popcorn. And finally, the verification time of Deep R N N is faster than popcorn. And here we show the uh speed ups. In a nutshell, we have presented Deep R N N, which is the first method for differential verification of two closely related recurring neural networks. And this work extends a ReLU deep and neuro deep to a general nonlinear activation functions. And also we extend um previous works um on differential verification to a general class of N N known as recurring neural networks. Our approach is faster and can verify more properties compared to state of the art popcorn and crown. Here are the references. Thank you so much for your attention.
Uh great, thanks Sarah for the nice video recording. Are there any questions from the audience? You can either raise your hand or type it in the Q and A box. Uh so I have a question related to your problem formulation. Uh do you fix epsilon in advance or you uh compute it as part of the algorithm?
And that's a very good question. And we computed as ten percent of output range for each benchmark. For example, for human activity recognition dataset, the range of the output was between uh I think minus ten and ten, so we fixed uh epsilon to two.
Excellent, uh and uh when you fix epsilon and you run your algorithm, uh in which cases uh do you get an unknown answer from the algorithm?
Uh when we get a difference which is uh which violates that epsilon value.
I see.
For example, the difference is more than two for uh human activity recognition data.
I see, it's because of the the over approximation uh coming.
Yeah, it might be, yeah. Either it is, it really violates, which means that the compressed network is really different from the original or it's because of over approximation and we don't know the answer.
So uh did you uh try to just run a very stupid algorithm? Just take samples from the inputs and compute the outputs of the two uh uh recalling neural networks to see what the difference is?
That's a very good question, yeah. That's actually a testing technique, you know, it might be even, it might give us a good result, but there is no guarantee. Because you know, uh it there are infinite number of inputs and we cannot test all of them. That's why we are interested to investigate a region of input completely. But yeah, that's testing method and the difference between formal verification is that it can prove that it is safe, but testing cannot give any guarantee.
I see, okay, but it can resolve some of the unknown cases that your algorithm.
Unknown, yes, yes, but um you know, for unknown cases, we had an input region. So how do you wanna check that input region? It will consist of infinite number of inputs and input region. So I don't, it can do that either.
So I mean, if you get a sample which gives you an epsilon larger or smaller than the intended epsilon.
We can prove that uh it's like the compressed uh network is not working as original network, but not the other way. We cannot prove that it's working in the same way.
Okay, great, thanks for the answer. I think Martin has a question. Go ahead, Martin.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, it's very interesting talk. So given that neural networks tend to be highly meshed, having all those almost completely connected layers. It seems that your approach would be subject to a very strong instance of the alias problem of interval arithmetic, right? So do you have any means of controlling those alias effects that arise from the same intervals propagating multiple different routes through the network?
And no, actually, we didn't investigate that, but it will be an interesting direction for future.
Okay, thank you.
Uh okay, so if there is no other question, uh we can continue the discussion and questions in the Gather Town. We have around fourteen minutes uh there and then we can come back here for the closing session of performance.
We'll stop recording and then I'll, but we will use the same uh session for the uh for the closer session, yes?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks very much. See you later.